Okay, good afternoon, welcome. This is a Marion City Council work session for Tuesday, September 15th, 2020. Those of you joining us from home, welcome. I will note that Council Member Steve Jensen is not with us this evening. Okay, we will start with a presentation of the All-Star Community Award. We were very happy to hear earlier this month that Marion was selected as the All-Star Community for the Large City category by the Iowa League of Cities. This is the third time in four years that our city has been selected for this award. So it's a, I think it has to be unprecedented, three times in four years. But in fact, I think the back-to-back awards was even unprecedented. So this is something for the entire city to be very proud of, and it speaks very highly for everyone that's involved with our city, all our staff, all our community partners, everyone who is so invested and committed in making Marion the best place to live and work and raise a family in Iowa. The All-Star Community Award this year was awarded for Prospect Meadows, and this is the award that we received. We'll add that to our collection. And I want to acknowledge Steve James and Jack Rader from Prospect Meadows. Would you like to come up and say something? We'd love to hear from you. Congratulations. Obviously, this has been many years in the making, especially for Jack, who has been really working relentlessly to make this project a reality. And we're just so pleased that it's fairly open, and even with all the challenges over the past couple of years, but it's operating and doing very well. And we just look forward to many more years of prosperity and working together with you to create great opportunities for people. And I think that's what you have in mind with this project. So go ahead, if you'd like to say something, if you speak into the microphone, just you can bend it.
Well, we'd just like to say thanks. I know I mentioned it outside, but I think the fact that the support that Marion has shown us throughout the years with this project was key and instrumental. I don't think we'd be open if it wasn't for the support of Marion. So we're really thankful, you know, for what you've been able to do to make this a reality. We're also very excited about the project moving forward. As you mentioned, we've had some challenges the first two years. We still haven't played a game in March, April, or May in two years. So it would be nice when we can get a full season in. And that's what we're looking forward to next year. Third time's a charm, right? The other thing I would say is that just an example of what Prospect Meadows can do, even though we lost four months literally of the season between the COVID and the derecho, we did draw about 220 team, traveling teams in the month of June. Once we were able to open up on June 5th, we did 135 teams in the month of July, and that would have been over 200. But there was really a spike in the COVID awareness again. And we had over 200 teams scheduled, but when it came down to it, we ended up with 135. But in September this month, we're on track for over 240 teams that will be here. So and they're from all over. It's funny, Sunday, we finished a tournament with 50 teams. We had 80 on Labor Day weekend. We have 66 or 70 this weekend. And then we follow up the last week in September with another tournament of over 50 teams. But what was funny, Sunday, because Friday was so horrible, we actually canceled the games for the first time. But we made them up on Saturday and Sunday. So in two years at Prospect Meadows, we still have not missed playing a game. They've all been able to fit into the schedule. And that's a combination of the turf, but it's also a combination of the outfield, which is grass, but it drains really well. What was funny, though, on Sunday was we had a team from Colorado that was playing. Well, their flight out of Cedar Rapids was scheduled for 7:30, and it was 5:30, and they were still playing. And one of the ladies came up to Steve and I said, can you form some shuttles for us here so you can get us down to the parking lot so we can make our flights when this game is open or over? So again, you know, it just kind of shows, you know, really the range of this. We got teams this weekend, two from California, one from Texas, all Wisconsin. Two weekends ago, we had 28 teams from Wisconsin in one tournament. I told people it looked like Lambeau South because of all the green and gold that was in that facility, which was fine with me since I'm a Packers fan. But anyway, anyway, you know, things are going great. I'll let Steve want to say a few words. You know, he's welcome to do that, too. But again, we're just very happy and thankful.
Thank you. Now, I just want to echo Jack's sentiments that the award is really the culmination of the public-private partnership. And we certainly wouldn't have been open or have been as successful as we have been thus far without the support of Marion, and we really appreciate it.
Well, on behalf of all of us and the entire city of Marion, congratulations. And please convey our congratulations to your entire team. Jack, I have something for you here. This is my copy. It's autographed because it's got my name and address on it. My copy of the Cityscape magazine with the front cover, Prospect Meadows. Okay. Next on our agenda is an update regarding the fiscal impact model development. Who will lead that discussion? Okay.
I'll give you an intro. Your Honor, a couple of months back, I presented you with a proposal. I was seeking your approval on a contract with Tischler-Price to develop a development impact model. The goal was to enhance our development review process and to optimize our land use planning. We kicked the project, and we've been working on gathering information on the city. And we've been working on the framework for design for the model. Our project was on hold since the ratio hit, but now we're back on track. And our consultant, Carson Weiss, is here with us today. He's going to give you a background on the economies of growth, and he's going to update you on where we at with the model design.
Okay, thank you. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Your Honor, members of council. Are you going to set up the, or do I do it from here? Okay. I'm going to spend a few hours telling you about the fiscal impact model. I'm kidding. I'm going to do about a 15-minute presentation. And please, if you guys have any questions on any of the slides, I don't mind if you interrupt me and ask those questions while you're thinking about them. Okay, so you're going to advance the slides, too? Okay, okay. A little bit about us, Tischler-Price, we're based in Bethesda, Maryland, and Boise, Idaho. And we're the national leaders in doing economic and fiscal impact analysis, as well as impact fees. We've done more of that type of work than any firm in the country. And you can see here, we have a national client base doing these types of studies. Next slide. You know, I just wanted to give you an overview of a few of our observations. One is that, you know, I think the city should be applauded for undertaking this effort because, in our experience, you know, most communities really don't have a fiscal or economic sustainability component to their land use planning process. And in fact, we estimate that probably less than 10% of the jurisdictions in the country factor that in to their comprehensive land use plan. I mean, it says a lot that we're the only national firm. We have some regional competitors, but it's a very, very small market. And, you know, a lot of plans have a public facilities element or a capital improvement element. But it's important to note that, you know, the capital budget typically is only 15% to 25% of the jurisdiction's annual budget. So it's really the operating costs that we need to be worried about. And again, you know, most of these communities really don't know whether growth has or is paying for itself. And, you know, many communities aren't looking at economic development proposals for return on investment. And then also, you know, piggybacking on that, you know, many communities are facing shortfalls due to, you know, reduced state and federal funding. And I think that's just going to continue as a result of COVID-19. And I think there's also going to be some revenue issues that we deal with as a result of some market changes. And I'll talk a little bit about that as we go through the presentation. I want to distinguish between fiscal and economic impacts. And I think that's important because we see these two terms used somewhat interchangeably in our work across the country. It's not uncommon for us to be in a council meeting and have, you know, a developer's representative come up and hold a report from the National Association of Home Builders that talks about all the positive fiscal impacts that a project has. And most of the time, in our experience, those reports are talking about the economic impacts. And that may or may not have a direct impact on your fiscal situation in the community based on your revenue structure. And we'll talk a little bit more about that as well. But the way we define fiscal impact is really the cash flow to the public sector. So we're looking at what are the revenues generated by new development compared to the operating capital costs to get that net fiscal result? Next slide, please. This shows the elements of the economic equation. You know, typically, when we look at economic impacts, we're looking at the cash flow to the private sector versus the cash flow to the public sector. And so we typically look at direct and indirect impacts, construction face spinoffs, induced impacts. And it's important to note that a lot of times, these economic impacts transcend jurisdictional boundaries. And again, depending on your revenue source, it really doesn't matter, for instance, you know, what the incomes associated with jobs may be if you're not getting a local option income tax in your community. Now, from an economic perspective, obviously, the incomes are important because it results in purchasing power within your economy. And again, I think this will be illuminated as we go forward. Next slide, please. Again, this just shows a result or an output from an economic impact analysis. Now, this is important. One of the questions we get quite a bit is, how is a fiscal model different than what our finance or our budget people are doing on a year-to-year basis? And there's two main differences. One is, your annual budgeting process is traditionally a revenue-driven operation. In other words, you're estimating revenues based on past trends and projecting those trends forward. You may be looking at revenue distribution formulas for certain state revenues and estimating revenues that way. But essentially, it's a fiscally constrained operation. We're looking at what's our revenue, and then we're backing into what we can afford on an annual basis. And so the second difference is, we're not maintaining current levels of service across the board. And that's what the fiscal model is going to measure. And in our experience nationally, we don't work with a single community that is maintaining levels of service going forward in all areas. You walk this budget tightrope on a year-to-year basis where you're balancing the budget by increasing levels of service in one area. But to do that, you've got to put off roof replacements or other growth-related capital improvements in order to balance that budget. So with the fiscal model, it's just the opposite. We're looking at, here's the cost to maintain current levels of service. Then we'll see if the revenue is there to cover the costs. And obviously, if it's not, then we need to think about ways that we can ameliorate any of those deficits. Next slide, please. So, you know, the kind of questions that you can use the model to answer, we've got a few of these listed here. Some of them are truly, you know, comprehensive planning-related, and others are more fiscal and financial management and city strategic policy types of questions. But from a land use and development perspective, you frequently use fiscal analysis to look at, you know, what's the relationship between development densities and infrastructure costs? You know, what's the optimal mix of land uses? You know, what's the relative impact of geographic or spatial distribution of growth on the provision of infrastructure and services? From an economic development perspective, I touched on this a little earlier, but you can use the model to look at, you know, how do we incentivize certain economic development activities? What's our return on investment? To what extent do we want to expose ourselves fiscally? Another big question we're often asked to answer is, a lot of communities feel like that they're in this game where they have to grow in order to survive because they rely heavily on one-time revenues that may be generated by new development, whether it's a construction sales tax, like you get in Colorado, or it's impact fees, et cetera. And so basically, you're answering that question, are we living off of tomorrow's growth? Next slide, please. Now, one of the things we're starting to do more and more of, and I think this is going to continue as a result of COVID, is using fiscal analysis to test changes in market, socioeconomic behavior. For instance, you know, there's been an urban renaissance up until recently where both baby boomers and millennials wanted to live in the same places. And so that had market ramifications. And so you can use fiscal analysis to test those types of trends, impacted behavioral trends, new patterns in retail consumption. You know, we've lived in a retail environment over the last 10 to 12 years that's been in flux. And obviously, COVID is going to continue to impact that market. I think we're also going to see a huge impact in the office market. And so I think that we're already starting to do this type of work where we look at future land use scenarios that have different retail assumptions and different assumptions about the amount of office and particularly office, but to a certain extent, industrial activity that may occur because of shifts that we're seeing in the marketplace already. Next slide, please. Before we get into the specifics of Marion model, I want to share with you some of our, you know, takeaways from our work around the country and some common misconceptions. One is, is that we constantly deal with this idea that residential development doesn't pay for itself, and that non-residential development generates surpluses in all cases. And that is simply not true. We cannot make these types of judgments. We see in some communities that in some cases, certain residential does pay, certain residential doesn't. But there's so many factors that go into the fiscal equation. And I want to give you some examples of those around the country. Next slide. So essentially, four drivers to the fiscal equation, we've got the revenue structure, which is the most important. And within that, we have not only the sources of growth-related revenue, but also how those are distributed. And I'll give you an example of that shortly. The characteristics of development in terms of socioeconomics, pupil generation rates, trip rates, et cetera, your infrastructure capacity or life cycle, which has a lot to do with where you are in the continuum as a city in terms of age. Are you a fast-growing greenfield suburb? Are you, you know, a white flight suburb from the 60s that's now trying to regenerate? Or are you a central city? All of these factor into the fiscal equation. And then finally, what are the level of services that you provide in your community today? Next slide. So this shows you an example, when your revenue structure drives the fiscal results. And this is from Arizona, where most cities and towns in Arizona do not have a property tax. If you do, it goes to debt only. But the cities rely on sales tax. And so in this sort of situation, we see, when we look at retail, office, and industrial uses and isolation, that retail, because of the sales tax generated, that's by point of sale, it's your most beneficial non-residential use from a retail perspective or from a revenue perspective. Now, when we have those same general uses, and we locate them in Ohio, in the state of Ohio, we have a completely different situation where the revenue structure there is driven by income tax, by place of employment versus place of residence. So we have the opposite relationship. You want to attract office and industrial because of the high wage employment. We see that retail, because of the high service cost and the relatively low wages, generate less revenue on a per thousand square foot basis. Next slide. This one, I think, is a great example. We did this study about 20 years ago in Sarasota County, Florida. But it just shows you the differences between single-family uses. And as we work our way from left to right, we have three different subdivisions, Billera Estates, Summerfield, or excuse me, Greenfield and Summerwood. And just these three different subdivisions generate different fiscal results. And there's reasons for that. And primarily, it has to do with your demographic characteristics. Now, we were lucky enough in this county, because the county also has the school district, that we had geocoded pupil generation rate data. But the reason why Billera Estates generate surplus is because, one, assessed values of the homes are basically empty nesters. There are no public school children generated from those developments. Whereas Summerfield and Greenfield and Summerwood were more entry-level and mid-level housing subdivisions, where you had a substantial number of school kids, higher persons per household, different assessed value assumptions. But it's just the reason I like this slide is it shows the dangers of just making a blanket assumption about residential development, because it really depends on so many factors within a community. Next slide, please. This shows an example of infrastructure capacity. As the driver, this is from Champaign, Illinois. And where we looked there was, you know, looking at, do we have more of a controlled growth pattern versus more of a scattershot development pattern? We showed that, you know, by having the controlled growth pattern, you saved over $50 million over a 10-year period. The example I like to use the most from this, though, is we did two studies at the same time, one in Lenexa, Kansas, the other in Lawrence, Kansas. And we got two different results. Growth paid for itself in Lenexa, but didn't in Lawrence. And the reason for that had to do where they were in the growth continuum. Lawrence was growing on the fringes, was constantly annexing. And so it was having to extend its infrastructure footprint on almost an annual basis, whereas Lenexa had substantial infrastructure capacity and was approaching buildout. And so we got completely different fiscal results because of the age of the community and their infrastructure capacities. Next slide, please. Now, in terms of your model, next slide, we do build these models from the ground up. So one of the things we do is survey the community on, you know, what are the types of questions you want to have the model answer? What are the sensitivities that you want to have? And these are some of the things that we're trying to incorporate into the model. One is, you want the model to be able to reflect geographic location, because, you know, every community isn't homogeneous. We want to be able to reflect that. For instance, downtown here, the type of retail and the type of restaurant activity you get here is very different than you would get in a suburban corridor in a more auto-dependent environment. So we want to be able to reflect those types of demographic characteristics in the model. Because down here, you're going to have more walking, so you're going to have higher internal trip capture rates. And so we want to be able to reflect that in the model. The model also looks at growth over time. So we're able to reflect the timing or phasing of new development. We can reflect the fact that some development may have higher density than other, and that will have an influence on the cost. Recognize, you know, your transportation choices, demographic, consumer behavior, differences in assessed value. If you wanted to get more sophisticated on a citywide basis versus looking at, you know, development by development, you can also incorporate what we call intervention strategies. For instance, you know, in some situations where a community is trying to have something happen, I'm just going to use redevelopment as an example, sometimes you have to force the market. Because if the market was, or if there was money to be made, the market would already be here. And so in order to force that market, sometimes it requires local governments to invest substantial money, whether it's infrastructure improvements or other types of efforts in order to make that force. And so that's what we call intervention strategies. So you'd have the ability in this model to sort of layer that in on a scenario over time. Next slide, please. In terms of the model design, it's developed in Microsoft Excel. It's enhanced with Visual Basic. And if you grow into it, we can also, you know, incorporate ArcGIS into this as well. We've kept it in an Excel environment on purpose, because it does allow for a very easy and powerful application. As you grow, you can adapt the model more easily. You can add different modules. And obviously, you want to avoid any black box concerns with any model. And so within Excel, you can trace the formulas. You can see how everything is working within the model. And we also, you know, have this Visual Basic interface within it that makes it very useful and user-friendly. Next slide. From a revenue perspective, you know, as I mentioned earlier, you know, we can reflect differences in retail. For instance, we're seeing, you know, sales per square foot changing for community-scale shopping centers versus more neighborhood-scale shopping centers as the amount of actual services populate retail space versus true retail, where you may or may not derive sales tax. We can also factor one-time revenues, reflect the fact that some of your revenues are fixed relative to new growth, meaning that, for instance, a lot of grants that cities receive from the state or federal government have nothing to do with growth, and it just happens to, or your allocation is based on what the state or the federal government can afford in a particular year. Next slide, please. From an operating perspective, we can, you know, reflect department or program area, if you wanted to. You could apply revenues against departmental expenditures. So for instance, you know, if you wanted to look at, you know, what our building permit fees are relative to what it costs for us to actually review and approve development plans, you could reflect that in the model versus just having them show up in the general fund on both the expenditure and revenue side. We can also have the model reflect staff versus program-related expenses. For instance, you know, you have the option of saying, you know, looking at what our fully loaded cost per acre is to maintain parks, or we can separate it out and say, you know, the personnel cost for parks is X, and then the non-salary operating cost for parks is Y. And so we would look at just the non-salary portion. So you have the options to do that. You can reflect, you know, staff and related expenses, factor one-time costs. And then, more importantly, you know, there's a tendency, much like revenues, is to assume that all costs are fixed, or excuse me, all costs are variable. And that's not the case. So in the model, we can reflect the fact that, you know, the city needs a city manager, whether there's 10 people here or 100,000 people here. You're going to have a community development director, whether there's 10 people here or 100,000 people here. So really, that's a fixed cost. And so we want to be able to reflect that in the model. Next slide. And then finally, capital costs. You know, the model can forecast the need for capital facilities based on the factors that we develop with staff, or we can direct enter your CIP into the model and do a combination thereof. We can recognize unused capacities of your infrastructure, which is really what drives the operating costs. You can reflect new facilities or build additions to existing facilities, include different assumptions for financing and lag times for construction and repurchasing after a useful life. And I think that is it. Next slide. Oh, maintenance of the model, this is the last slide. So as part of the implementation, you know, we will conduct two training sessions with staff, instruct them on the annual update of the model, as we discussed with senior staff earlier today. There's a color-coded, you know, pattern within the model that lets folks know what cells you're supposed to update and which cells you aren't. And really, the users of the model will focus on the front end and the back end, which is the inputs and the outputs, the sort of the middle part of the model, the guts of it, if you will, aren't likely to change, or the methodologies aren't likely to change on a year-to-year basis. It's just the budget for that. And there will be a complete user's manual and level of service assumptions document that goes with that. And at this point, we're about 50% to 60% done. We've got, you know, a good, you know, 50% model done. We're here today answering some questions or getting some answers to some questions more toward, you know, forecasting capital facilities going forward. And we expect to be done here within the next six to eight weeks. And with that, I know this was a lot in a short period of time, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Anyone have questions? I would bet that Grant has a question.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Oh, I always like those questions from behind.
Yeah. Well, you know, I have to sit at the back of the room to stay out of trouble. The one question I have is, and you answered one of my principal questions, is what's the timeline for the project? And so it seems like we're going to be operable with this in a six-to-eight week timeframe. Is that fair?
I would not say that that's fair. I think that we will be complete with a draft model in the six to eight weeks. What happens then is, I'll come back in, we'll sit down with everybody, go through the model, make sure everybody's comfortable with it. You know, this is what we agreed on. You know, we've got a question about this, a question about that, or can you tweak the design, you know, to give us this output, et cetera. That'll take us another two weeks to, you know, sort that out. Then we'll start scheduling the training. And typically, what happens is, you know, that first training session, it's a little overwhelming for staff at first. There's a lot to absorb. And what we do is we encourage them to, you know, make copies of the model, sit with it, break it, so to speak, because that's where you're going to get all of your questions. And so what happens on the second visit is that's when everybody has all their questions, because they've had a time to sit with the model and really look through it and develop those questions. And a lot of times, since I'm crisscrossing the country... And a lot of times since I'm crisscrossing the country all the time, I'll drop off and do a third training session. You know, for free, just because there's, there's other questions that come up. But the second, second training session is really the more in-depth one where we really get into analyzing different types of projects and that sort of thing. So I would say it's probably, and, and that, that really depends on how long it takes for staff to get comfortable with the model. I've seen it take, you know, after the first training session, that's three months before we have a second one. Sometimes it's four weeks. So I think, you know, within three months, the city would probably be up and running.
So that leads into my second question, which maybe with those words you've partly answered. Can we expect to go through a multi-year maturity model to have proficiency with this?
Not sure I understand that.
Well, I guess, so it seems like we're starting out. Low level of understanding and able to make utilization. At some point, I would say that we are at a high degree of proficiency. So is there. Based on your experience across the nation, is there a. Sequential step of maturity achievements that, that we should anticipate?
Yeah. And, and so. I think the key to success in that, and, and all of our clients tend to, you know, you sort of crawl and then you walk and then you run with model. And, and a lot of times, you know, five years later, we'll get hired to, to revamp it, to do something completely different, like add an economic impact layer to that. But the, what, you know, what makes the model successful is when you have a multi-departmental or multi-discipline team. Involved in the development of it. So it's always good to have somebody from finance or the city manager's office. As well as have somebody from planning and economic development as a minimum. Because otherwise what we have found is it then becomes viewed as. The planning department's model or the finance department's model, and nobody really knows, you know, what's going on behind the scenes. And so what, what's encouraging about what we've seen here is that it seems to be just that. And it also, the departmental meetings we've had have tended to involve many folks versus just the director coming. And so a lot of times what happens in those situations is as, as there's turnover, institutional knowledge leaves. And then eventually everybody, you know, the people run out of steam with the model, so to speak.
Very good. That, that answers my questions. Thanks.
Anyone else? I think this is great. I know that staff's excited about it and. It's a major step, I think, for the city to be doing this so that we can be more planful and make decisions that make sense. And we can know where we're going and grow in a way, and grow in a way that, that makes sense. It's founded in good decision-making. So thank you for.
Thank you. My pleasure.
On it and we'll look forward to hearing more about it. Thank you. Okay. Moving on with the agenda. On page two, there are two items marked at the, at the bottom. Is there anything prior to that? That anyone would like to discuss in particular before we get to those two items? Okay, we'll go on to number eight. Street Finance Report.
Sorry, Leanne is reminding me of my, that I should engage in some more social niceties. Just did want to take the opportunity to introduce everyone to Kirsten Fisher as the city's new HR director. It's her second day. She came back after her first one. So we're taking that as an excellent sign. So you approved her employment agreement. There was one revision on it here on item seven, just related to making sure that the residency requirement in the contract is actually reflective of the city code.
Welcome, Kirsten. Welcome to the team.
You know, it feels like just yesterday that I was giving this presentation last year. Before I start, I just want to express my appreciation of the Marianne team. Especially finance this year as we are preparing for several leave of absences in our department. And also to engineering and public service who had to provide us information despite having to respond to the storm. In order to get this report completed. So this is the street finance report for the year ended June 30. It details the receipts and expenditures on street related expenses. And it must be filed with the Iowa Department of Transportation by September 30 each year. If we don't file it by September 30th, they actually start to withhold your road use tax starting in October. And they will continue to do so until December. And if you haven't filed by December, you actually forfeit until you have the report filed. So. That's, you just want to express the fact that we were able to get this done by September 30th despite responding to that storm in the last month. So really appreciate the staff support in that. And the intent is to provide accounting for the entire street program. So on the next slide, you'll see just kind of the summary of the activity. Last year when I presented the report, I mentioned the fact that they were looking at revamping the report. We have been. We do like the changes, the changes they have made had been positive and, in my opinion, bring a lot more transparency to the numbers. So I have listed the funds on the left side. So like I said, the report is supposed to. Show the Iowa Department of Transportation, all of the dollars we are spending on streets, not just the road use fund. And I'm just going to make a few comments on these numbers because they were included in your packet. The general fund does include street lighting, traffic lighting, mainly utility bills for those. And then some engineering department expenses. And the special revenue column or row. It includes the road use replacement fund, the road use sinking fund and local option sales tax. The debt service fund is high due to the refinance. Just a reminder there, we had refinanced four series this last spring. And then the capital projects fund there is reflective of ending fund balances for projects. If you want a detailed report, we can provide that to you. But I will say the larger projects over $500,000 in expense this last year. Included the public service maintenance facility, Albernet Road Extension, Tower Terrace Road, Central Corridor. The Highway 13 Hennessy Signal Project and the HMA Program. And then on the next slide, I always like to be able to present. The budget versus actual, even though that is not part of the road use report because. I feel that, that is where council's attention generally is drawn. So here I've reflected budget and actual, and just a few highlights as well. Revenue you can see did exceed budget by $383,115, which we were excited to see. Especially when COVID hit and so many people working remotely, we were concerned about that number. The good news is the estimates coming from Iowa DOT most recently, while still down from the original pre-COVID estimates are continuing to rise. So that, that was great. On the operating side. It's always hard to predict snow events and the timing of the snow events. Obviously a snow event that occurs on the weekend is going to incur a lot more overtime expenditure. So that difference we tend to see change year over year just based on those events. Project costs are, you'll notice they're negative on here and that's actually reflective of the movement of the cost to the capital projects fund. If you recall, we had done a reimbursement resolution for the public service facility and had been funding the public service facility out of road use tax. And then once we had done that issuance, we started accounting for it in the capital projects fund. And so we moved those expenses over to the capital projects fund. Transfers out, there's a huge difference because of the delay in the compressed natural gas fueling facility and fleet that was originally budgeted in fiscal year 20. And then as you can see, overall, the fund has grown by 191,000 a year. That's all I have for you unless you have questions.
Questions for Leanne. Yes, go ahead.
Hi, Leanne. Thank you. And thanks for everything you do as well. It's, there's, we're. Under a lot of restraints and constraints as far as making these reports. The, excuse me, the last report that I had seen from the IDOT was approximately $50 million. Was going to be a lost revenue due to the COVID. Those projections were about three weeks ago. Has there been any conversation? Do you know if that's up or down or where that's moved? I've been kind of just tracking that. And obviously that was, a lot of that was from our road use fuel and vehicle registration. But any, any comments coming out of Des Moines about that?
They actually just sent out a new report September 11th that Mike Barklow went ahead and forwarded on. I don't, I guess Zach's not in here anymore. He's actually probably been more in the detail than I've been able to. I reviewed the first page and I was remembering reading a percentage. That they were estimating that it was down 30% for. A particular area and the actuals were coming in around 15. I can't give you more detail than that without digging into the report, but.
And that's fine. Thank you. I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I was just kind of curious if there was any. I'm always intrigued by some of the conversation coming out of Des Moines on those expectations. So thank you.
I think the, the last report had him projected about an eight percent shortfall.
Okay.
So it does continue to improve.
Thank you. Other questions for Leanne or comments? Again, thank you to everyone for doing your part to get this done in a timely way. Considering all the challenges we've had. So thank you to everybody. Appreciate it.
And the next one on the agenda is actually the annual finance report. And for that one, I will bring up Brian McKenzie, our accountant.
Good afternoon, Your Honor and fellow council members. This is the report on the annual financial report for the fiscal year 2020. Which covers July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020. Now this is a report that's also due to this state by December 1st following fiscal year end. Now this report is, it's structured in a way. It's more of a high level report to the state which shows. It shows our revenues and our expenditures more by class rather than by department. Obviously we do budget by, at the department level, and I'm sure that you'll be looking forward to getting to that when budget season starts. But this is the past performance of the last fiscal year. So in the state report, the revenues actually are arranged by source. And the expenditures are arranged by function. So like I said, this will be more of a high level summary. One of the functions of this report are to show at the expenditure level. That we did not go over what we said in the budget that we were going to spend. And so you'll be familiar with the budget amendment process during the year. So that's where we would monitor the expenditures and make any amendments necessary. So this report needs to show that we did not go over that for the year. Next slide. So just a, a, a brief overview of the revenues by source that's on the report, which was in your packet. Property taxes speak for themselves. There is other city taxes which are made up of, of the franchise taxes, which have been a nice new revenue source for the city in the last year. Hotel motel tax and local option sales tax. Then we have intergovernmental, which are your grants at the federal level, state level and other local contributions. Then our charges for our, our, our fees and our services. So that's our water, sewer, garbage, road access fees, building inspections, recreation services as such. And then the other financing sections are stuff like our bond revenue, capital asset sales on our transfers in. Next slide. So our, so like I said, the expenditures instead of by department, they're at the function level. By the state. So public safety would include police, fire, animal control, public works, roadside rocks, snow removals, street lighting. And then we have culture and recreation, parks and recreation, library pool. And then we have debt service. And we also have our capital projects fund. And our business type activities, which are our proprietary funds. Next slide. So I just wanted to kind of give an overview of. Again, like I said, at budget time, you would probably get into the details at the department level. But I just wanted to give you a kind of an overview of some of the key areas where. With budget against actual. So on the revenue side, under the other city taxes, we did see a difference. We actually had about 7.5 million in revenue against 6.5 million in budget, which was due to. Higher local option sales tax and higher franchise fees. Then the use of their money on property, a lot of this is, is made up of our interest revenue. Which again, was higher than originally budgeted. We're not sure about this year, given the decline in interest rates quite rapidly. So. Then with the other two intergovernmental, you'll see quite the difference there. It's actually, we had budget to receive reimbursements from the other municipalities for the Indian Creek Trunk Sewer. Which that project's kind of, hopefully we will receive that in the next fiscal year or two. And then other financing sources, like Leon had touched on, there was the. We did not bond for the CNG facility equipment. And so hence there was not a transfer. Next slide. So the, on the expenditure level. So, so public works, that was mainly due to the CNG fleet replacement. That did not happen. That's about the four million difference that you'll see there. And the capital projects, we were well under budget. That tends to happen. We do kind of shoot for the stars and then. Some of the projects do not get completed for, for numerous reasons. And then the same is said, there is quite a large project budget in the business type activities also. Excellent. So I'm sure, I'm sure you're all aware, but. I, I just wanted to remind you of some of the major copper projects expenditures that happened during the last year. Aside from the major ones that we tend to think of, like the new fire station, the library that's up in. That has started now and the new public service facility. These are some of the others on your screen that we have made some major expenditures on. The report does also make you report out your debt for the year. So we did see an increase in our revenue debt, which was the financing on the public service facility. And then there was an increase in RGO due to the, due to the two bond series that we're bonded for. Next slide. And this is just a comparison. The two numbers at the top is our statutory debt limit. And then you'll see that is our general obligation. Numbers for the last year compared to this year. So there was a slight increase which was expected. Or not, I will open up to any questions.
Thank you, Frank. Questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, on to page three. Number one is not marked for discussion. Would anyone like to discuss that item? Any questions on that? Okay, we'll move on to public safety. One item and it's marked. Chief Kitzmiller?
Good afternoon. Look at that. Get your mask out on your glasses.
Happens to me all the time.
Yeah. I wanted to come today and talk to you about the lateral transfer program. Back in February, you guys had approved us hiring lateral transfers. It saves us money from having to send people through the academy. If we hire somebody that's already certified. So you approved us, instead of spending. It's roughly $12,000 to put somebody through the academy. We give a $9,000 hiring bonus if they're already certified. We put them up in our salary placement based on the years of service they have. We put them up in our salary placement based on the years of service they have. They don't get any seniority. It's a really good program. We've hired three people since you approved that. I got one lateral transfer. He went out to the field training program for five weeks. He's been out on the street by himself since then. The other two are just graduating from the academy tomorrow after four months. They've got another four months of the FTO program before they're out riding by themselves. It's worked out very well for us. What I want to do is expand that to encompass out-of-state certified officers. I've had some inquiries. We've got a posting now for two positions. I've got twenty-four applications, and I've got six lateral transfers who have applied. One of them, at least one of them's from out of state. In Iowa, you can get certified in Iowa if you meet certain criteria by taking a written exam, and you also have to take a DUI course. It's going to cost us about two thousand dollars for those exams. So, what I'd like to do is, instead of giving nine thousand, we give them seven thousand, and that would be after they become certified here in Iowa. We put in there that it would be six months. They have to take the test to get certified, but in the interim, they can do the field training program here. Iowa will allow you to work as a police officer without being certified for up to a year, which is scary for some people to think about that. We normally don't do that. We won't put them by himself, but as soon as they can take that written exam, we can get them certified here in Iowa, and they'll be out on the street. I think it's a good program. It's a good bargain for us. Again, we're paying salaries for people to go through the academy, and we're not getting necessarily anything back or return our investment until about eight months later, and this way, it speeds it up. But, we've got the... the union, excuse me, has signed off on an agreement to the MOU, an addendum to this, and so, we're asking for you guys to sign that and allow us to do it.
Okay. Questions? Go ahead.
Chief, do we have, I know from state to state, there's other prerequisites, there's other levels. Do we... do you... who would make the decision that our local and state levels, they would either be equal to or superior than ours? Can you just explain to us how that...
Yeah. The Iowa Law Enforcement Academy's board sets those standards. There's certain criteria. Part of it is how long the academy was they went through in the other state, what topics were taken. So, when I got my certification here, after I got out of the FBI, I had to go back and take the test because I was certified in Tennessee. Iowa didn't recognize the FBI as a real law enforcement agency. So, I had to go back and get my transcripts from Memphis, but I had enough hours in the academy down there, and you have to get your transcripts. It's fairly rigid on the standards that they apply, and we would make sure that that person meets all that before we would offer a job.
Perfect, thank you. I was a little familiar with that. I just wanted you to share that with everyone else, but, Todd, and I am a huge supporter of this lateral opportunity, so kudos to you and the department. I look forward to watching that continue to flourish.
Thank you.
Is there a downside to hiring laterals?
I don't think so. We don't give them... we don't give them seniority, so it doesn't affect the guys that are already on. For us, I think we've had a couple of people over the years in Marion that we've hired and sent to the academy that didn't work out. So, by having these people that have already been on the streets, we've got a track record that we can check. We know it's a career that they want to stay in. We had one individual that quit since I've been here that just decided it wasn't for him after he got out of the academy. There's really no downside, other than maybe making some of the other police departments and sheriffs.
Why wasn't it the case until now?
I wasn't here before now, Mayor.
I'm just curious what the reasoning was behind...
Yeah. I think a lot of other agencies, since you guys approved this in February, I've had no less than ten other agencies call me and ask me for the paperwork we did and how we wrote ours up to get in front of their councils.
I think the big key to it, Mayor, was being able to handle the seniority issue, because it's one thing to bring someone in and slot them into a salary schedule based on years of experience, but people that have been here and putting their time here want to make sure that if you've got a seniority-based system, that they're able to preserve that.
Yes, Renee? Go ahead.
Thank you. Is there any one predominant reason you're finding with the applicants that want to come here that's a draw to Iowa? Are they leaving urban police centers because of unrest? Are they coming for our schools? Or is there any one common denominator?
I haven't seen anybody from Minneapolis. I would think Minneapolis and some others, I know a lot of those officers up there are looking. The one individual that I know is coming is coming out of the Milwaukee area that put in, and it's a spousal issue. His spouse or fiance got transferred to Iowa. He's moving into the area. I knew of her, and then, he reached out to me through that, and we discussed it. But, yeah, the other one... there's one in Minnesota that's in southern Minnesota, and I don't know the reason for coming here. But, again, when we do our backgrounds, we would do a background like we do anybody else. We will check their internal affairs. We'll check the prior employer and make sure that they're somebody that we want here.
Yep, thank you. I'm excited. I think it can also help expand our diversification, which we've talked about for the past several years, and then, just recruitment for police in general, keeping that up. So, nice.
It's a little hard to find people that want to do this right now.
Go ahead, Grant.
Yeah. Chief, two questions that I have. One is, the people making lateral transfers, do they at any future point enter into the seniority system, or are they... okay? They start at the bottom, first year. The way we do their salaries is if they come from a department with less than thirty officers, they give one year's credit in our salary scale for every three years they did there. If they come from a department with over thirty officers, it's a one-to-one up to our seven-year mark, and that's where we cut it off. Okay. I talked about maybe trying to include vacation and sick time in there to get them up to where you would be at our normal seven-year level as well, and it got kind of complicated to keep up with, and so, we're going to keep doing with just salary for now. If that begins to be an issue, because I know a lot of people, after they have time on, you know, their days off are probably more important than their pay a lot of times. The second question is, then, how many vacancies do you currently have? Two. Okay. So, we can hire two, but we can keep a list through civil service until that list expires. So, if we have anybody leave in the future for the next year or so, if we've got viable candidates on that list, we don't have to retest. We can just go down the list and offer jobs. Good. Thank you.
Annie?
I just wanted to add one more thing. Renee made me think of it, and that is, is what's intriguing in this about this for me is the lateral movements. When people take a look at considering this because of the retirement and pension programs. So, younger individuals who have more of a tenured into a plan for a vesting schedule, these play in a crucial role. So, and you pretty much set that one up yourself. So, when we take a look at these and people are taking a look at career opportunities, their location, where they're raised in their families, those are falling much higher priority than their own pension plans. So, it's really exciting to see that, and I'm intrigued that as we continue to watch this, that we're going to start to probably see more out-of-state come in, just because of the different pension plans that surround these programs from state borders to state borders. So, again, kudos to you. So, I'm very excited to follow this.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks. On the parks, we have two items marked. Seth here?
Your Honor and counsel, both these resolutions coincided together. The first one's an amendment for a current contract we have with MSA for eleven thousand. The old contract was for the amount of sixty-six thousand five hundred, and this is for the Lyle Park Self-Development Project, the playground, shelter, and the restroom. There's additional services that was met by MSA for, one, for not meeting the completion date on time, the extended services beyond that, and then, also just to try to get a closeout with the current contractor for this. It would be staff recommendation to be able to amend the contract and pay off MSA for their side of the work, to be able to close them out of the project, and then, just deal with the contractor ourselves.
Okay. Questions? Seth? Okay, thank you, Seth. On to engineering. The remainder of page three is engineering department payments for various projects. Any questions on those? We'll move on to number two. Okay, number two. Mike?
Yes, Your Honor. So, number two is change order number three with Rachi Construction. As you know, we had a slight storm in town. We did have the National Guard go in and try and clean some of this up, but as you can see with the holes in the equipment, the intakes, the storm sewer that's just sitting around there, it was very hard to clean that area so that we could get the contractor back in. So, it was a lot of handwork and a small skid loader. So, we just did it as time and material in order to get this project back to moving, because there's residents right now that don't have access to their house. We're doing a similar thing on Fourteenth Street right now. We will try and submit this to FEMA. I know they don't like time and materials, but we'll try and get reimbursed for it, but we may not. But, we needed to do this in order to keep the project moving.
So, has the work been completed, debt and the cleanup?
Yep. So, this is before they did the cleanup, what it looked like on A Avenue.
Yeah. Thank you for doing that. I guess I was receiving some communications from people down there, and it was, you know, they're in a frustrating situation. So... Questions for Mike on that? Okay. Thank you, Mike. There's one item under community development, which is not marked. Anyone have a question on that? All right, we'll move on to the regular agenda under administrative services. Number one.
Thank you, Your Honor. Normally, we'd have them all present on this, but she's discharging her duties as deputy slide clerk tonight, so I'll go ahead and take this one for her. Excited to bring this one forward. This is an amendment to the Central Corridor Urban Renewal Area. The city council will probably remember that urban renewal areas are defined to allow for the city to be able to do economic development incentives in specific areas of the city. They'd have different rules depending on the type of urban renewal area. But, each urban renewal area, in order for us to do a project, that project has to be specifically called out and named in that urban renewal plan. So, whenever we contemplate doing a project, we have to amend the urban renewal area and the urban renewal plan to be able to allow for that. So, this one is being done to allow us to proceed with a project with Marion Uptown Partners LLC, Eagleview Development, and that's with the redevelopment of the Marion Square Mall. They are looking to take the area that currently has the older strip mall on it and to develop it with a series of two new multi-story buildings, one with a mixed-use component where the main floor will be entirely retail and business and then residential above it, and then, the second one, which would be on the Sixth Avenue side, would have a smaller retail component or business component, and then, primarily residential.
Okay. So, are we doing one and three together, or is this just one? That's just one?
That was just one.
Okay. Any questions on number one? Okay, for number three, I'm going to turn over the meeting to the deputy mayor pro temp. Is that the right term? It's all yours.
All right. Lon, it's all yours.
All right. So, the next stage, after we approve the amendment to the urban renewal plan, the city then has legal authority to proceed withholding the public hearing on the development agreement itself. And so, when we look at projects in a specific urban renewal area, one of the first things that we look at is, does it fit with the stated purposes of the urban renewal plan? And certainly, this one does. With the Uptown District, we're looking at making sure that the Uptown is a cultural and entertainment destination, that we want to create those public gathering spaces and create new residential opportunities while expanding our retail and commercial space. So, this is an early picture of what the facility was going to look like. I think it has changed a little bit since this one was originally presented to the city council, and they have now actually renamed it. It's no longer MU One and Res One. It's now Broad and Main on Sixth and Broad and Main on Seventh. So, they have two different, more formal names for the facility. So, it is consistent with the economic development policy and the Central Corridor redevelopment plans. With the Central Corridor, the defined area in between the roundabout at Seventh and the roundabout at Fifteenth is intended to be the new urban uptown core, which fosters multi-story development, more intense development, really more like what you would see across the street with your traditional central or downtown core of community. Now, Marion applies a standard that a lot of communities don't, which is what we call our "but-for" test, which is when we look at this, we ask the developer to provide a lot of information about their financials on the project, and then, look at, well, if we were to help, can this project proceed without the city stepping in to help? So, we call that the "but-for" test, that but for us helping, the project would not be able to proceed. And this one does meet the "but-for" test, and I would say that in the wake of the derecho, that this is going to be a really nice jumpstart for continuing investment in our Uptown, and I think that that's even more critical than it would have been before the event happened. So, how does it meet the objectives for the urban renewal plan? It will certainly expand the tax base. It's consistent with our purpose statement. That area is considered to be a brownfield site, so it's a redevelopment of underutilized or blighted property, meets identified community needs, not only for new and upgraded commercial space, but also for additional market-rate housing. We had a housing needs assessment that was done in two thousand and sixteen that identified a need for up to five hundred new units at market rate, and Marion's had a couple hundred built since then, but we still have room in our market. And I would say the community's larger since then, so we may have just been keeping up with growing need. Oh, but just no... no matter how many times you look at something, you always find a typo, because I'm not sure what the "nest use" is, but I'll amend that to "highest and best use for density." It'll also comply with our active living policy, which is intended to create more livable spaces, create more walkable areas, more community gathering spaces. And then, with the adoption of the Uptown Plan, we do have new Uptown design standards, and it will meet those. So, as far as the incentive that we're... that they are looking for, and it's needed to make the project move forward, there's a gap in the project of about three point three five million that they would look for the city to ultimately fill. Upfront, they need assistance of about six hundred thousand in order to be able to close on the property. So, this would come in two different pieces. It's structurally similar to what we did with the hotel project over on the east end, and will allow them to be able to move forward with the project. So, what will happen is they'll come in, build the two buildings. Each one has an agreed-upon minimum value of seven million dollars apiece. The city will first take what we need to be able to repay that three point three five million out of the taxes that are paid on the facilities, and then, whatever is left beyond that, they will receive one hundred percent rebate for the first fifteen years. And then, after that, they would get seventy-five percent of the total taxes for a five-year period with a maximum of six point nine million towards the total cost of the project. So, looking at that, it's a twenty-six million dollar investment from the private sector into those two buildings. You will note that there is a pretty significant difference between the amount that it's going to take to make the project go and what the minimum assessment is. Part of that is because of the way Iowa's assessment works, we're not able to capture the full value of residential, and these... both of these buildings, even the mixed-use one, have a pretty significant residential component, so we can't push the minimum assessments too far. They have to have a reasonable relationship to market value, so that hits. But, it's also a demonstration of just what it takes to develop in an area that's already got buildings on it. This is where we seek, as a community, to try to equalize the cost of development in brownfield sites versus greenfield sites. If you were to buy a greenfield site up on Tower Terrace Road, you're not paying for existing buildings. You don't have costs of demolition. You don't have the costs of brownfield remediation. The purpose behind the city financing is to help bridge that gap so that people will continue to invest in your urban core rather than just going out to all of the areas where they don't have to deal with those types of issues. So, the current taxable value on the site is about one point six million dollars. When all is said and done with those agreements in place, there'll be a floor of fourteen million between the two, so about twelve point three million in new increment created. When we look at the present value of that, it comes out to around seven point two. The total rebate stream in present terms to the developer would come to around four million, but that means that as a community, even during the rebate period and the capture period, we'll see growth of a million dollars that we would not otherwise see if the project didn't occur. So, we are going to be deferring for a significant period of time the total benefits, but there is still going to be a million dollars of the benefits that will accrue to the community during that rebate period. And that doesn't get into some of the things that Carson talked about, that we didn't really attempt to quantify with this one, but that's the increased economic activity and the swing effect that it has on the properties around it. This project is substantially similar to ones that Mr. Cottrell and his group have completed in Cedar Falls, and one of the... And one of the things that they've really seen is an uptick in the values of the associated property. In other words, that investment lifts the value of everything else around it. It'll create opportunities for new businesses with the micro retail space that they're talking about and kind of the shared space that will help reduce the overall costs of build out for future tenants and help us to revitalize a blighted area. And the last thing that I would mention is just that, starting with, when we had our branding analysis done, I think back in 2013 and 2014, we have really been seeking ways to increase the number of residential units in the Uptown area because there's a big difference between the amount of spending that households will do for those that are within walking distance and those that drive. And even when we had the branding analysis done, Roger Brooks, the consultant then said that those within walking distance on average would spend $6,000 more at a business than those that had to drive through it. And so with 80 to 100 new housing units coming online, we'll see a significant economic boost to the Uptown outside of just what the construction will do.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Yes.
Lon, what's the duration of the rebate period?
20 years.
Okay. So at the end of that 20 years, we'll have a net realization of $1 million.
The 1 million will be during the rebate period. After the rebate period, we'll see the full realization.
Okay. Thanks for that, that clarification. And then one last question, since this is designated as brownfield, is that once the plaza is demolished, do we have any remediation activities that have to take place before construction starts?
There's no identified brownfields in the city square park or the street area of this. Anything is on the privately held site. And it does have a brownfield remediation tax credits award associated with it from the Iowa Economic Development Authority. So that's intended to help cover those costs. But there shouldn't be anything that would accrue to our side.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Back to the mayor.
Thank you. Okay. Number eight, under administrative services. Zach?
Good afternoon, Your Honor. As a continuation of our discussion that we had in September, a couple of months back, thank you for the opportunity of giving us some time internally to discuss the strategic plan a little bit further. Part, part of those efforts you guys should have received in your packet for this last week. In your package, you got an updated strategic plan. You got a, a document notating the strategy owners as well as a document, giving a draft copy of the KPIs that Councilman Agudelli asked for beforehand. So it gave us some time to review that one last time before coming, before council. And you'll see in, in the memo prepared before council too, that there were two small changes. One, we wanted to stipulate the difference of enhanced the resident experience. We felt that was a little too generic, given we had a vibrant community section and that also talked about enhancement in the area. So we added the word patron to specify the focus on the economic development portion of the resident experience. And then secondly, there were two strategies in there that were rather similar. So we collapsed them into one and took out some of the additional gov jargon in there to make it a little bit more plain language. So with that, the document you're seeing is, is almost identical to what you saw previously. And also during this time too, we've also been able to get on the calendar, Dr. Monica Allen, she'll be coming on site in October. And so we've cleared schedules of staff as well, because that's one of the next components, as we mentioned internally, is really build out. Now that we have the strategic plan, the structure for the strategic plan, I'm really talking about what are those, some of those intersection points that we can do over this three-year period to make sure this is successful and that we can monitor it properly as it goes through the process. So we're excited about that milestone, moving that forward. And with that, I take any questions?
Questions for Zach? Go ahead, Renee.
Thanks. Yes, thank you for the more detail on the KPI. And so my only question with the exception of Kirsten, since it's only day two, everyone who is an owner on here bought in and there was robust discussion and everybody's kind of signed off on this to get it to us.
Correct. Yes, we did meet as a group and we went over each strategy individually. And part of that too was to make sure that in a number of the areas that we're looking at, there's multiple strategy owners. So it's not just going to be completed by one department, but actually a culmination of work. But we wanted to make sure that there's one individual who'd be tasked to lead for the initiative as it goes forward. And then they'd be doing the collaboration. And that's, that's part of the next layering of the work plan. And the work plan sessions, what we'll be doing is in addition to looking at what are those substeps that need to take, go forward in order to move that strategy forward, identify the individuals, but then also get into the, get into the KPIs more fully. Because that's the area that we really need to spend some more time on as an organization to make sure that we have a, a good baseline set that we're looking to move forward with. And then as we're testing that out over these next really six to eight months, to see how will those work for us in FY '21. So.
Great, thank you.
Yes, go ahead. Zach, continuing along with the KPI theme for just a moment. My experience with KPIs is that you, you define an initial set. And I think you just sort of hinted at this. You get six months in and you figure out, well, that isn't working for us. So is there a mechanism to refine or to revise the KPIs, but still maintain the integrity of the strategic plan?
The, the great question of how do you have your cake and eat it too with accountability? Yes, being very versed in KPIs as well, when I worked in Maricopa County, that was also always the, the trick. Once you, once you, once you decide on a measure, you don't want an individual then saying, well, I can't meet that number. So let me now change it or find a better measure for it. So what we're looking for is in the, with the KPI development is, is one, while we're looking, when we do spend the time to have those in-depth conversations as to what are those steps that we're going to take to get there? Of fleshing out and making sure one, the, one, the KPIs are, are, the data is attainable, that we can access it readily. It makes sense. It's the right targets we're looking at. And then the other portion of this, once we, once we have that in place, is we'll be looking at this annually. So the strategic plan, we're adopting it today. It'll come before, the opportunity to come before council on an annual basis to see, are there any areas that we, we need to improve upon, meaning either maybe one of the strategies is, needs to be tweaked slightly or some of the measures just may not be the best representation of what we're looking to move forward. So in that case, on an annual basis, we have, also have built in the opportunity to look at that if we're finding that some of the measures aren't working.
Okay. So just to clarify, based on an annual cycle of review, if you have a KPI that just fundamentally is proving itself to be uninformative to operations and activities, that you can then either revise it or get rid of it and create a new KPI that has a more meaningful foundation.
Correct. And in addition to that, I should have mentioned too, is that we also have quarterly reviews. So that's a review period that we have built in. Hoping at a minimum, most of our KPIs can work on, on a quarterly basis, being that some of the measures may require, we may actually get data on a monthly basis. That would be a better indicator, but we're going to be looking at our, asking for update, our status reports on a, on a quarterly basis to see how we're progressing with those KPIs. So that's at a minimum, the checkpoints we'll have to see how we're progressing as an organization.
Okay. Other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, on to page five, under public services, there are two items that are marked. Hello?
Your Honor, counsel, the first item that is highlighted is resolution approving a contract with Debris Tech LLC. Debris Tech's a monitoring firm. These firms are necessary when you have a catastrophe like this. They come in, they do what they call monitoring, they have to monitoring the debris that is collected and then also dispose at the temporary re, debris reduction site. We have three proposals submitted to the city of Marion. Debris Tech was not the initial choice, nor were they the lowest, but we did go with another firm. They were here for about a week, then we parted company. We had a lot of issues with that firm, so Debris Tech took over. And I can say they have been performing very well. We're very happy with the services. So Debris Tech is a Mississippi-based company. And as I said, to this point, we've been very happy with the service. And so staff is recommending moving forward with this contract.
Okay, questions? Okay.
Okay. Item number two, this is a resolution approving. And then the first addendum with Southern Disaster Recovery. The purpose of this addendum is to include some female language that Kara Bowman, City Attorney Bowman wanted in there. This does not change the scope, nor does it change any of the basic premise of the contract. We're just checking, checking off the boxes for FEMA and that's the, the only intent here. We're just changing some of the language so it's more consistent with what FEMA is looking for.
Okay. Questions on that? Thank you. Thanks Ryan for everything. Okay. Under public safety, there are two items that are not marked. Any questions on those? In parks, there's one item also that's not marked. Okay, move on to engineering. Mr. Barcalow?
All right. So item one is the project calendar for the 10th, 10th Central Mini Roundabout. So this will release the plan so that we can get them bid. It does have an engineer's estimate of just under 613,000. Sealed bids will be received on October 20th of 2020. It has a late start date of June 21st of 2021 with 35 working days and $1,500 per day in liquidated damages. We are trying to get this done during the summer when school is not in session. So we had to wait till they set their dates for the summer. And this will be full closure to try and get it done during this process. So it will be a very large inconvenience during the process, but that's why we're trying to put it in a shorter timeframe.
What's the, what's the late start date? Sorry?
The late start date is June 21st.
Questions on that? Yes, go ahead, Renee.
So full closure, sounds a little scary, but I get it. Will there be any overlap with the estimated timeline to complete this project? And then the bridge project that we have going on, on Seventh or our main road? It has like three different names, because that's another, we're not full closing that, but I'm just wondering if that will overlap with the timeframe of this one?
I guess which project are you referring to?
Oh, sorry, over here. By Second, where the park is, right when you make the McDonald's trestle.
Railroad Bridge.
Yeah.
That would be done this fall.
Oh, perfect. Okay, thank you. Just want to make sure.
As soon as the lion drops the power, we will take that bridge down.
I don't think this, this is an issue, but the school traffic, is that, I mean?
That's why we're doing it during the summer when they're not in session.
Right.
It's the plan.
They're going into June, I think, but I'm not sure. So anyway.
This was the latest date that they gave us, so. We can always amend the contract if we need to, but that's our plan for now. Get it bid.
Okay. Other questions? On that one? That takes care of number one. We have every item under your section marked. And I think Tom is trying to compete with you because he marked every item on his section too.
So item number two is the actual MOA regarding the, the traffic signals out at 151 and 62nd. They will be putting temporary signals up in the interim because they cannot get them that soon because they want to open in November. So in the past, city council approved a resolution requiring the traffic signals. So this just formalizes it into the fact that we'll allow them, with the DOT, to allow them to put temporary signals up in the interim and they will not get a full occupancy permit until the permanent signals are in and approved. So they can get a temporary occupancy, but not a permanent occupancy.
Questions on that? Okay.
So item number three, if you recall, we were going to have the loading on South 14th Street on the east side. With the derecho, they were going to put some paving out there so that the kids could stand on some pavement rather than the grass. And obviously with all the debris and everything else going on, they were not able to do that. So in essence, they're going to delay when they're going to switch traffic from 14th or, yeah, from 15th to 14th. And so this is just a, a letter from the superintendent letting you know of that.
Okay, questions on that? We, you know, we got, we got the copy of the letter.
Yep.
Number four?
So number four is to receive file and concur with the tack report regarding the request for the school speed zone on 35th Avenue for Buller Peak. And then number five is then the first reading for said speed zone. If you want to go back one more slide. So this is basically starting at Learning Lane, which is the west side of the proposed school. You can see the school entrance and then the RFB is the rectangular rapid flashing beacon where the kids will cross 35th Avenue. And then the Easter boundary is 600 feet west of 44th. So that encompasses both the proposed school and the future school along the Lindmar property. And so it'll be 25 miles per hour when children are present.
So is, there is a flashing beacon in the plans?
The school's going to install it, but they have not already as part of the improvements.
Oh, okay. I misunderstood when we talked about it earlier.
Well, this, that was at 35th and 35th. This is south of the school on 35th Avenue.
On the other, other side.
So 35th Street is where that other request was, and that's just signs that we're putting up. There's no rapid flashing beacon there. So different locations.
But, yeah, right. And that's where the crossing guard is going to be.
At 35th. I believe they're actually going to have crossing guards at both locations.
Okay. Just want to make sure I'm giving people the right information. Seems to be a big, big question, which is understandable.
35th Avenue and 35th Street is only going to be a signed crosswalk with a crossing guard.
Right.
Here there is rapid flashing beacons on 35th Avenue, south of the school.
Okay. Perfect. Questions for Mike on that one?
And the school would probably appreciate if some of the readings were waived and get it in there sooner. But that's up to city council. Otherwise it takes three readings.
I see. You haven't had anyone, anyone reach out in opposition, I assume?
No. It's a school zone. Most people.
Yeah.
Want their kids to be safe, so.
Yeah, it's probably, okay. Number six?
So number six is a contract with Anderson Bogart. We did receive eight semitals of proposals from different engineering firms and we chose them based on their qualifications. We did receive half a million dollars for this intersection through the T-SIP program. And so that way they can start this design and get it let so that we can see when we can get those constructed. So the contracts for 65,000.
Questions on that one? Okay. Thank you, Mike. Community development. Is that you, Tom, or someone else?
Kesha.
Kesha. Hello Kesha.
Good afternoon, mayor and council, joining you from upstairs. Downstairs seemed a little tight. So what I wanted to do is I wanted to bring an opportunity to your attention that we have. And so what you see on the screen is unfortunately, the scale of it is so shrunk down because it's an 11 by 17 image. But what you see here is on, there's this black line overlaying an aerial. And on the far south side of that black line is Mount Vernon Road. And on the far north side of that black line is Grantwood Trail. And so this is what the county is referring to as the Manatee Trail or the Dow's Manatee Trail that they're working on design for. And this design is, I wouldn't even call it preliminary design. It's, it's a conceptual design. It's a very educated conceptual design. And so what this project is, is it, is it looks at the water, it looks at the floodplain, you know, kind of, where are we looking at maybe increased cost here or, you know, here are some options for different designs. So it's taking that into consideration. And so I was brought in, you know, obviously from a trails perspective, and originally my understanding was that this trail design was going to extend up to our future Prairie Hill Park. And as you can see, this design doesn't, it only goes as far north as Grantwood Trail. And so in talking with the county, I just said, you know, while we've got this design in play, while we're looking at this whole alignment, is this an opportunity to extend this trail design just kind of conceptual? So this gives us a good understanding of costs that we would incur. And so what this does is this allows us to be better at our cost estimates for grant getting, having this in place, having something tangible to say, we've already taken a good look at this, we kind of, we kind of know where we want to go with this. And so we, we looked at extending the contract to include up to Prairie Hill Park, and so I was going to say, can we switch to the next slide, please? And so this is my nice drawing. This one's a little bit zoomed in. The green line on the south is the existing Grantwood Trail, and so this would take from their conceptual design, and so this would take the trail, and this is by no means set in stone, but this is kind of alignment, you know, trying to follow close to Squaw Creek, and then get up to the proposed Prairie Hill Park. And so what this does is that red line that we'd be requesting to add to the contract is approximately 1.6 miles, and so it's no, no short trail segment by any means, but kind of coupling with their, with their contract already, the contract amendment was 12,300, so they said they eat a little bit of the cost, they weren't, they weren't exactly looking to, to cover the full cost. And so we have, we're looking at including this in the budget, I think Zach and Lon have already taken a look at that, including this in the budget. And so this is something that I wanted to bring to your attention before budget amendment process next June, so we wanted to make sure you are aware of this, that this is going on. We think it's a great opportunity for us to complete this at this time. Like I said, it, it helps us down the road when we are going for grant dollars. We don't have a specific grant in mind yet, but like I said, it, it helps us down the road, and I think this is a great partnership with the Lynn County Conservation Department. Any questions of staff?
So at this point, we're just, we just want to get this into the design and to the plan.
Yes. And so this, this gets us that kind of conceptual design, so we have a, a better estimate than no estimate, to, to figure out, you know, what, what does our budgeting look like? What does our grant getting look like? You know, how far is that limit that we need to look for? And it also would help us to figure out different segments, phasing of this trail. I mean, for Lynn County, it's, it's a much longer trail, but for us, if we would partner with Lynn County to get it from Prairie Hill Park down to Squaw Creek Park, what does, you know, what does each community's cost in that? What are, what are the benefits to each in that realm?
Okay, I think that's a great connection down to the park. Yes, yeah, Grant, go ahead. Kesha, is there a possibility of funding from the Metropolitan Planning Organization to support this?
This segment of trail is not currently in the fiscally constrained plan, and so with the, with the corridor Metropolitan Planning Organization, they have a fiscally constrained plan that you can apply for projects, and then the rest of them are vision plans, there's many more projects in the vision plan. So this one's just in the vision plan. Right now, we can't apply for funds, but that's not to say that I don't anticipate asking for an amendment to that, because I do see this as a significant trail for Marion, not only to connect Squaw Creek into Marion for weekend goers, but I think Marion to enjoy Squaw Creek Park without the use of a car to get there.
Okay, thanks for that. I, I think you and I and Mike have probably been delayed in having a discussion about MPO considerations due to the storm, so I'm looking forward to rebooting on that conversation in the near future. Thanks.
Yes, for sure, thank you.
Any other questions for Kesha on this item? Okay, thank you Kesha.
Thank you.
Tom?
The next item, your honor, is a resolution setting date for a public hearing regarding SNS storage being proposed out at the MEC. Clearly, we're just setting the date for the public hearing tonight. I did provide a pretty lengthy staff report in the, in the packet, but really what we're talking about is a, a storage commercial condominium facility for the property. It's, it's actually just located south of the police station out on North Gateway Drive. This is 36,000 square foot primary building with four 12,000 square foot buildings attached to the site plan and kind of in a circle format. I believe there's an elevation in the next slide. There's the site plan, so the, this is, it looks like the building's in the middle, but the, the, there is a building in the middle, but it looks like the parking's just around it. Well, there's other buildings along the side, so it's kind of a tricky site plan to read, just so as you're looking at that site development plan. As I had indicated, there's one main building and then four 12,000 square foot buildings surrounding the site. There's, this is being developed to the tier two design standards, and I did provide a, a review of those standards within the packet. And there's the elevations, the material and signage and lighting and site planning was, was all complete and satisfied the code. Looks like a really nice building, and the planning commission reviewed this at their meeting and is recommending approval, so.
It doesn't look like your typical storage facility.
No, no, it certainly has different amenities, and I don't, and I'm sure the developer will speak to that when he's here, but it's, it's not your standard storage, it's not even proposed as your standard storage, so. Any questions on that?
Questions?
So we're just setting the date for the hearing.
Questions? Okay. Go ahead. Number three.
Number three, again, we're setting the date for a public hearing regarding the preliminary site development plan for the aisles online pickup order at the Hy-Vee. I'm sure no one's used aisles online lately, right? This is probably one of the biggest, I guess they were doing aisles online before, but as a response to COVID, Dave had an overwhelmingly huge desire for online shopping and, and online pickup. So this is a pretty big investment that Hy-Vee is proposing to make on their site. It's going to be a, a smaller building to the west side of the, the west side of their existing facility with some actual canopy over the drive aisles, so that when you go and pick up your aisles online order, you will have a staging area, and you'll, when you just pull in, then they'll come out and, and load your car, and you'll be able to move on. So there, there's always a concern for parking at the Hy-Vee. This was zone plan development, parking was considered at that time. When it was, when it was developed, parking was an issue at the time. I think over the years, it's always been a concern. I don't think it's ever pushed to the point where there's been a major outcry from the community at the planning commission meeting, and after notification, there were no issues brought to the commission meeting, so there seems to be support, or I should say, there isn't an overwhelming outcry that there's no parking available, and it was a minimal disruption to the existing parking areas that are of primary use. This is just the west of the building, and I think that's a fairly minimal parking area for the store. The planning commission reviewed this at their meeting, there were, there were no comments from the public at that time after notification, and the commission is recommending approval.
Yes, go ahead Renee.
I was, Tom, as I was looking at this and have obviously some grocery store background, you know, obviously this concept probably would eliminate some of that parking need, obviously, because this is, you know, you're transferring that component of parking going in, we're here, they're driving up and picking up. So obviously, I would see a lot of that traffic flow, you know, going off to the side there. So was there, outside of what you've just outlined on the parking, was there any other concerns about traffic patterns or flows of that into that particular area, because it is limited access or not?
There was some questions at the planning commission being relative to how the traffic flows in and out of that area, just because that access on the 35th gets quite congested, and I, I think, you know, it's, it's all internal, and so I think, you know, they're, they know what they're in for as it relates to that, but from a public perspective, there's, there shouldn't be much of an impact because of the internal service drives that are provided to it, but it, it'll be tight.
Understood, excellent, thank you very much.
I, I do think it's interesting that one of the statistics that came out was that they were doing, when they first started aisles online, they were like 55, this was stats that were provided, 55 online orders a day, and, and now they're processing up to 100 an hour.
An hour.
If you can imagine.
At this particular store?
What's that?
At this store?
Yeah. I, I, I don't know, that, that would be hard to believe if it's just that store, but I think that might be in the, in the area.
In the metro?
But that's pretty amazing, so.
It's probably only going to increase.
Yeah, I would imagine.
Okay. I saw you with your hand out, I thought maybe you're turning on the mic. Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Number four?
So number four is a follow-up to the rezoning that occurred for the Mooresey property out east of Tower Terrace Road, south of Winslow Road, and, and once the property was zoned, and as, as usual, it falls up to the preliminary plat. I would point out, and I can't really point to this, but the, the lot one is the lot that was zoned, the local business district, and that's up in the left-hand corner there, and it would be really where the Winslow Road tees into Tower Terrace Road. The rest of it's remaining the ag, and honestly, this, this, this development's not being set up for a current development. What I, what I see happening are lots will be created for sale and then, and then replating. So there's a farmstead on one, the larger outlot is mostly store, or floodway, Indian Creek, and I think we talked about the walnut farm that's on that property, and then there is one, I believe one lot's vacant that would be available for, for development, but they're not proposing to do any development with this preliminary plat. I would suspect what we'll see as a final plat, that would result in a sale to a developer for further subdivision. Or services to the facility, but I would point out that a great deal of the, I believe it's the outlot is in the floodway and flood, outlot A is 18 acres, non-buildable in the floodway and floodway fringe, the 501 interyear floodplain, so.
Questions? Okay. Number five?
Number five, I think this is an exciting project for everyone. As the council knows, and as everybody's pretty aware, there's a library proposed next door, and...
But I'm proposed! It's happening.
Exactly. And so a part of that is, you know, design review process within the new zoning district classifications, and obviously, we've known for a while what's being proposed and the, and what materials and such are being identified for the library. It's a great project, it's been a great collaboration, I think internally with the architect and with library and library board. I did provide a, a staff report, or I should say, they've provided a staff report outlining how the building does fit into the corridor standards, and I, I think it's pretty safe to say that everybody's pretty excited about how this is moving forward. The planning commission is recommending approval of this. I'm not going to go through all the, the details on it, but truly, it's a pretty exciting project. I do want to point out just a couple things. As I think I previously said, this is one of the first projects to be developed or reviewed under our new zoning district classifications in the corridor, and so one of the, one of the requirements were onsite trees, which I think we're probably going to need to revise the ordinance, because in an urban area, the number of trees that were being required as a part of that development review don't really, doesn't really line up with doing an urban style development. So as indicated, there's an exception to the zoning that's going to be going to the zoning board of adjustment on Thursday, really looking for an exception for a, a few trees that would be required on the lot. So it wasn't many, I believe it was under, under 10 trees that were being accepted. Out of that, I think it was even like five, so under six. Or being a request for an exception, and then the other request is, and it's, if you look at the, where the, the flagpole, there's a sign on that planter box that is considered a monument sign, and there's a variance request to place the, the library's name on that sign, and so that, that is moving forward to the zoning board of adjustment on Thursday as well. So those items will go to the board for review, and obviously, if either of those are, are, are not approved, you know, the sign just won't go there, or, so it does, it wouldn't hold up any of the project as it's proposed at this point. So again, planning commission reviewed it, I think they were excited about it and recommending approval.
Okay. Questions for Tom on that one? Okay. Next one.
The next item is a final plat. I only bring this up, and I'm just going to talk about it briefly, just because we don't see a lot of final plats in the county adjacent to the city this close. There's three lots, creating one new, develop a lot north of East Robbins Road, west of Mulberry. When you're driving down, driving west on East Robbins Road, there was a new house that went up, it's the property in between, you can see they've done some clearing and grubbing, and they're going to, they're probably going to sell one of the lots for residential development. I just wanted to point out that as a part of this, we do get an annexation agreement in place. Neither the city nor the applicant is in favor of really moving forward that annexation at this point, but just know that when we do have an annexation in the area, we will have support from this property owner by virtue of that memorandum of agreement, so. I just like to bring those up, because when we get into annexation, there's always quite a bit of conversation, so.
So by annexation agreement, they'd be agreeing to be annexed, correct?
Yeah. At the request of the city?
No. Questions? Okay, number seven?
So item number seven is something we don't get to do very often, and that is name a street. And so I got to admit, when staff gets the opportunity to name a street, we really don't like it, because we got to figure out what to name it, and it usually never goes over well. So here we are. So anyway, we did a little research as a part of the, the plat out here, where Quick Star is going. There's a frontage road, and when that was planted, we didn't know really what was going to happen with the rest of the property, they bought it all, and now we're seeing some development potential for the property in the corner of 151 and Highway 13. So we're at a point where we need to really look at that proper, or look at that roadway and, and determine a name. Dave, I give Dave credit for this, he, he went back and he did a little research on trying to figure out how to do this, you guys have seen the staff report, so he went back to some of the old property records, and so at this one, this point, staff is recommending that we go with Beal, Beal Court, based on a previous landowner from, I believe, the 1800s, so. So we're looking for a motion directing staff to proceed with that, then we got to go to the, the planning commission, and we'll bring it back for a street naming at the city council level.
Okay. Anyone with strong feelings on that?
There were a lot of other names bounced around the department, but I don't know that I need to bring all those up.
Okay, other questions for Tom? All right, thank you very much. And this is a once in a lifetime, the library has one, two, three and a half pages of items that are all unmarked for discussion, not marked for discussion, but please feel free to call out anything you'd like to discuss in particular, we'll see Holly's here, so. Anything, any questions on any of those items? Nothing is marked, but a lot of stuff for the library this, this time. Would you like to say something? Come on forward.
Thank you, the only thing I will say is that...
Thank you. The only thing I will say is that, as I do agree that this is a one time, once in a lifetime, that there are so many pages, this will probably continue for many council meetings because we're using a construction manager. All of the contracts are with the city. So every time we go through and do bids or do any contracts, they're going to be listed like this. And I just want to give a shout out to Mike Barcalow and the engineering team for their support and helping me with all of this. Because this is not normal library director work. And to Rachel for her grace and patience as I learn this process. I think you all received some information. We'll be discussing this further Thursday night.
Okay. Any questions for Holly while she's up here?
There's one item that doesn't have anything to do with the building that's at the end of that list. I just wanted to remind you all, it's a purchase for computers. These are, these were planned in our asset replacement schedule for this last fiscal year, and we carried that over due to COVID. As a reminder, we were renting all of our computers from the Cedar Rapids Public Library at a rate of $500 a month. That was a decision and a contract that was executed before I took over in my role. And we had the dollars in asset replacement. Those are PCs that we are going to be using in our technology station. So we wanted to go ahead and make that purchase and get those in our rotation. They will last us until we go into the new library. They're on a every five year replacement schedule.
Did you have questions on that?
That was kind of my question. They're going to, so they will go into the new library?
They will. It'll just, in the long run, save us money to not have to pay that $500 a month and just own it since we have those dollars in asset replacement.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're on page 10. Under other department discussions, we have a discussion regarding citywide zoning map update. Dave, are you with us? Tom?
So really where we're at is, we're at a, we're at a point where we've had a zoning map in place for a long period of time. We've got revised zoning districts approved. And, and I think even to, to Councilperson Goodelia's question about a month ago was, why thought we already did that? Well, when COVID hit, we were about to start the process for our public hearings to adopt the new zoning map. As you just seen, we adopt, we, we did the rezoning for the Morrissey property, one of the new zoning district classifications. We're, we're, we're sitting at a point where we're really feeling that we need to proceed with adoption, even though we're not going to be able to do the public hearings and the public meetings like we had originally planned. We're six months, if not more, behind the whole conversation because of COVID. And we like to have the meetings face to face. We like to be able to sit down with neighborhoods and, and proceed in that manner. It just seems like meetings go a lot better when you can sit down with folks and have a conversation. But we're just to the point where I think we need to move forward. So we're still looking at adopting the map in sections. And we can still work to have those meetings. They're just going to be virtual like the rest of the world's doing their meetings these days. So that's, that's what we're proposing is to move forward in that manner. I just didn't want it to be a surprise to the council. Or if there's, you know, if there's a desire for us to wait three more months to figure it out, that, that's fine too. But we're certainly in a position where we feel like we need to move forward. I will say that the map's been out there. We've done notifications. We had the ward meetings a year ago. And I, and I'm, we, we just don't get people calling and asking about it much. The folks that are really engaged in zoning are the developers and they know what we're proposing. And so we still talk to a few of them on occasion, but we're to the point where we either need to move forward with what we're proposing and they need to submit what they want to see done. And that's just going to be a process to have to come out of the process of adopting the zoning map. So.
It's probably developers or people with development land.
Yeah.
Developable land, yeah.
Yeah. So before we move forward, we just wanted to bounce that off the council, let you know kind of where we were standing. We don't want to hold it up, but certainly we need to move forward. So we're looking for some direction. And if there's any indication that you wouldn't want to do it in that manner.
Councilmember Goodella?
Yep, thank you. Yes, let's pull the trigger. I, I wish we could do it face to face, but we did. You guys really did that last year. We've been talking about this. We've been talking about the need to get it done. It ties to so many other things. And we're doing everything else in the new normal way. So there's no reason to delay this because I don't think that we're going to get back to the old normal if we ever do exactly the same way for some time to come. So I think we should move forward personally. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone have any strong opinions on it one way or the other? Go ahead.
Well, I would just also concur with that approach. I don't have any hope that we're going to see something that's near normal for another year. And so I think to move this forward, there probably will be some opportunities for augmenting communication just in the, to make sure that people know the process that we're going through in, in the event that's, let's say, members of residential areas want to weigh in on it. But I think segmenting it into bite sized chunks, having the forums online and get the commentary is the way to fly.
Other opinions on that? Okay. Thank you, Tom. Final item before the closed session is the discussion regarding face, face mask, face covering mandate. Do you want to lead that, Lon?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and introduce it. And then City Attorney Bullerman is joining us via Zoom to be able to provide any other context or answer questions. But after we have the multi jurisdictional meeting, Kara went ahead and prepared two potential proclamations for the city council to take a look at. The main difference between the two is really down to the wording of it. One of them does include a requirement for the use of face coverings in public areas. The other one makes it an advisory or a recommendation. So that really is the core of the difference between the two. There are, as you can read through it, you'd be able to see that there are some exclusions that are listed in there as well. Some based on age, people that have trouble breathing, oxygen therapy, ventilators, et cetera. But this is one that they have, that Kara has developed that she believes to be consistent with the home rule statute in the Iowa code. And also would be something that the city of Marion was able, able to enforce. The only thing that I would note just for the discussion is that you may have seen that Iowa City just recently extended theirs to push that into November as well. So there was some more recent news in our area for another community that already has one in place. Beyond that, I would see if Kara wants to go into more detail related to the differences between the two before the council goes into deliberations.
Thank you. Kara, are you with us?
I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, excellent. So as Lon said, following the multi jurisdictional meeting, I went ahead and kind of took the Cedar Rapids proclamation since we want ours to be similar to theirs. Should we pass one? Just to kind of prevent confusion across the city boundaries. And I developed two kind of based on what I had heard in the meetings. One, as Lon mentioned, is more of a requirement. And that actually provides that masks are required in public areas. It does have some exceptions. And I kind of changed some of that language a little bit to make it more clear as to what kind of exemptions there, there would be. For example, the one that Cedar Rapids did just put engaged in moderate to heavy exercise, which is, is a pretty subjective thing. So I kind of changed that to be actively engaged in a sports activity or engaged in group exercise or working out at a gym, so long as the person remains six feet away from any other person. I'm just to kind of give that a little bit more of an objective measurement. And then I, I put in italics some of the ones where I had had some questions from maybe some of either the other attorneys that I spoke with or just ones that we weren't sure we may or may not want to include. And then additionally, I did change the language in to A1 to kind of clarify that the first requirement to wear one outside of one's dwelling is for when you're outside and that it is required when you're inside. I know that in response to the Cedar Rapids one, I had seen several businesses say that so long as you're six feet away from other persons, it doesn't matter if you're inside or outside. And so I wanted to kind of make sure that we had that very clear. Other than that, Councilman Jensen did mention to me that we might want to modify, should we go with the advisory one? I did forget to change the language in that paragraph when I did the one that is more of just an advisory or recommendation, but not a requirement to make it an obligation for businesses. And, and I would assume that if we're just making it a recommendation, we wouldn't want to require businesses to try and enforce what's just a recommendation. I do have some enforcement possibilities in there. But I do make it so that we can make the original enforcement, sorry, a warning or give them a face mask, whatever we would need to do, give them the opportunity to comply. But I think the main enforcement would really come from situations where we have a business that's asking somebody to wear a mask and somebody's refusing and also refusing to leave the premises, then they could call it in as a trespass. I don't know of any cities that have had to do a ton of enforcement with theirs. I think for the most part, once they put it into place, they see compliance go up. I, I don't think it would need to be a situation where we have police out walking through Hy-Vee, writing tickets left and right. It would be more of a situation where we have kind of a problem situation where something is escalating or it's a repeated, a repeated situation where people are just refusing to comply and it's creating a problem. Do you have any questions for me, mayor or council?
Questions for Kara? On the language of the two options? Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, so Kara, is version one the closest to the Cedar Rapids proclamation?
Yes, it is the closest. It just has a couple of changes that make it a little bit maybe more clear. And then the other, I didn't mention the areas in italics in the whereas provisions are, or the, the main recitals. Those are things that I know during one of the, the meetings, I'm not sure which mayor it was recommended, that they would want to try and keep it as, I guess, nice, for lack of a better word, as possible. And those are kind of more politically loaded statements. And by politically loaded, I mean they're really outright stating that we believe that we have the home rule authority to do this and here's our citations for that. I don't think they're necessarily as bad as, as some people do. And I think they are kind of a statement of where our authority comes from, but I don't know that they're necessary to the proclamation.
Thank you.
Other questions for Kara?
We have received email correspondence on this issue. I believe all of those either were submitted to the city council at the same time or have been provided to city council separately.
Any discussion? Anyone have a particular feeling on it? Go ahead.
I'm just. So I would like to just learn that I struggle with the enforcement piece, right? So I absolutely support the use of wearing a mask. But I, I think I'm, I'm trying to figure out that enforcement piece and not wanting to put our police right in a place of having to enforce face masks. So I think I'm just looking for a little guidance. Maybe, maybe chief, you've heard from other, right? Some of your colleagues in other communities and how it's going. So if you could provide some insights, that would be really helpful.
Well, I've, I've talked to some chiefs and officers from other cities where they've had these. It's similar here. I don't know from our enforcement perspective that we would do anything different under either version. It's going to be asked first. I think the biggest thing is it gives the businesses in town a little bit of top cover that they can rely on it and say, we're requiring it because we're following the, either the mandate or the recommendation of the city. And then they can tell people whether to put a mask on or leave. If they refuse, then they can call us and we can do a trespass. Anything else that we've done through the COVID and through the storm with the some of the proclamations and the, I'm drawing a blank, curfew. Everybody's been compliant. We haven't had any problems. The mask is a little bit politically charged. I, I trust that our officers have a little, enough moxie to get through that where we wouldn't have to actually write somebody a ticket that we could get them to comply with this or at least go back to their house without a mask. Like I say, I haven't heard of any issues anyplace else where it's become a, a major push back and forth between an officer and the citizen. So I'm kind of relying on our officers to use their, their kind of people skills to get through this.
Okay.
So add to that, we do have a lot of code sections now, which there's a certain level of discretion for officers to enforce. Nothing is obviously 100% enforceable. There's always people who are going to speed. There are always people who are going to choose not to wear their seat belts. But there are things where, like, we don't typically see officers going in and checking the ID of every single person in an establishment that sells alcohol after the curfew time and things like that. So we already have some level of discretion in, in all of our code sections. And so I think it would really be a situation where that would kind of come down to however the chief would want to advise his officers on how they want to handle that.
So I really like that education piece. That's helpful to hear, right? The last thing, so where I stand, I think to start the discussion is struggle with the enforcement piece, right? Because I don't want to put the officers in that position. The flip side to that is, or what goes along with that, right? Is the idea that we know that wearing a mask protects others, right? So it's not about me, it's about protecting others. And this idea that our goal is to continue to keep our businesses open so they can continue to make money. And I don't want to give the governor a reason to close down or continue to keep our businesses closed. So if we're wearing masks and we're required to wear masks, perhaps that will help, right, with keeping those numbers down. And what I heard on the call on Wednesday, which was really helpful, and I appreciate, I really appreciate our communities getting together to have the discussion. That was quite helpful. But I did hear, which I was waiting to find out, was it, does a mask mandate actually make a difference? Because if it doesn't, why would we go through all this work? And what we heard was folks on that call and those other communities said that when you mandated or required a mask to be worn, that it did increase the use of wearing masks. So our goal is to keep our community, right, safe and keep our businesses open to continue that economic engine without putting our police officers in more peril, right? Because that's the last thing we want to do. It seems to me that that would be a, that's the space that I'm in at this point in time is, is mandating the mask.
Yes, go ahead, Randy.
Thank you, mayor. I just wanted, I have, I'm sure we all have a lot of things we want to cover on this particular section here, but I just have a couple while the chief is here. Going back to your specific expertise here, if the city were to, if we didn't do a proclamation that specified the requirements of or request heavily requesting a mask, I'm trying to relate this to the concealed carry permits and signage that was out there for businesses in the past. It was left up to the businesses to have their discretion as to whether or not they wanted to post no concealed carry weapons on premises, which would lead to obviously trespassing if they were asked to leave the property. If we were to scale this back, I feel in my opinion, I'm a little torn on this as, as we had our joint meetings, but yet we've been brought forward basically two options. I'm not in favor of either one of them. I would like to try to have that discussion and a little bit more understanding of, you know, I'm all for the proclamation of, of requesting it, but short of requiring it. And then I don't want this to be taxed on the police department by any means. It's, to me, it's, it's, it's just not the proper way to handle this. So I guess back to, sorry, I digress there. Back to my original question. If we did nothing, could we still allow the businesses to mandate their own rules in their own house, so to speak? If we used, if they were to post that, could they then reject people from coming into their business if they did? coming into their business if they didn't require, if we didn't require a mask?
Yes. Menards is already doing it. You can't go in Menards. I think Lowe's just went to it where they require a mask. If you come in and they see you, they'll ask you to either put a mask on or leave.
Okay. And that's what I wanted, that's what I wanted to do. I just wanted to kind of work that backwards to say, if we did nothing, could do the businesses have that right? And if they were to, you know, make a call on that action, would they be within their rights? The second component to that, that I was, I regret that I didn't bring up during that meeting. And that is, is if we could find some type of signage that could be used across the city that was consistent. For example, a yellow sign and that message had the same markings, the same identification. Because so many businesses now have so many different messages on their doors that people just aren't reading them. And I've witnessed where people say, we do require the mask. And I went back out and, you know, and it wasn't me, but they were referring to the sign. Well, there was a dozen signs on the door front, you know, so it was difficult to identify that. So for example, if it was a bright yellow sign, it was used across all the cities, you know, to allow that, I think it would be a quicker identifiable signage. So I'll leave it at that. I know there's some more topics here, but we'll circle back around. I just wanted to ask if the businesses had that right? If they knew the city was somewhat enforcing it or making a strong recommendation that they could use that as their, as their go-to, so.
And it'd be similar to the 10-foot or six-foot rule, you know, when we had the social distancing in stores. If they had customers, we kind of relied on them to self-police because we weren't going into Hy-Vee with our ticket books and our yard stakes. And if they got people that were uncooperative, they would call us and we would come in.
Sure, sure. Chief, the basis for their voluntary enforcement would still be, would still be trespass, just like it is in the mandatory proclamation? Is trespass available in either case?
Either case from a business. If the business asks somebody to leave.
Says, no mask, no entry. And someone insists that they want to enter. That would still be trespass, whether it's mandatory across the city or whether it's voluntary.
Correct.
Okay. I think that's important for people to know. Okay. Kara? Oh, I didn't know if Kara was gonna chime in on that. Okay, go ahead, Will.
For the chief.
Oh, chief, we have one more question for you, sorry.
Kind of follow-up to those questions. Have you had trespassing calls? Or masks?
No, we haven't had, none come to mind, especially at Menards. I think at the beginning, when people were just finding out that they were requiring masks, they were, they were having a lot more interactions with their customers. But I don't recall that we've been called down there for that, to enforce it. And I think Governor Reynolds, as far as the bars, I think she opened those back up starting tomorrow. I just saw the proclamation come out. So bars are going to reopen tomorrow at noon, I think.
Yes, go ahead, Renee.
Thank you. I won't be here Thursday to participate in this vote, so I just want to be clear my feelings about it for what they're worth. So I would not support the word mandate in a mask. I, as I mentioned on that call Wednesday, and like you said, Colette, I thought it was a great collaboration of multiple cities in the county. And I felt like there was a similar sentiment and some councils had actually already taken a vote and there have been divided councils, but it didn't pass in some of those. And I just, I feel strongly that from my time on the school board, I just, it's unenforceable mandates are anathema to me and I just can't get behind those. But I would be for, I think we all talked about more education. I think using a stronger word like a requirement or an advisory, I'm for that because it is about protecting others. And I would like to see people do more of it. I think us setting an example and certainly trying to do my part in that way. I think signage, consistent signage, particularly if other communities go on board this way, because some of them don't even have law enforcement to enforce if there is a mandate passed. And so I think that maybe some kind of consistent signage could be a good idea. But I, I just feel very strongly that this isn't a thing for the police. The businesses can call you either way for a trespass. But I think unfortunately, it is kind of political. And I think as we move more into the season, that's going to be challenged. If we were to come up with a mandate, I think there will be situations where people are going to get hostile. And I just don't want to be that community where we're put to that test. I would hope that we're doing the right thing, all of us wearing our masks and getting other people to, educating people, more PSAs like we've been doing and other, other ways to educate the public. But a mandate is not a word that I would get behind.
Yes, Grant.
So I think, as many of you know, I've looked at more of the research and science behind this than probably was good for me. But, but the science is clear. Wearing a mask prevents the infection of others and therefore depresses the propagation of this disease. And unfortunately, not everybody has that appreciation. And I've gone full circle on this thing about three times in the last day, the last couple of days. I guess I am in favor of a proclamation as an advisory message of expectation into our community that does give some limited air cover to businesses in their enforcement of what they decide to do in the confines of their, their business activities. I think with the bars being opened back up and that was late breaking news to me. And with schools starting back up, I think we're going to have an opportunity to see what the evolution of this disease is going to be. And I think starting with augmented public education, having a proclamation as an advisory is a good starting point. But I think we need to be on the ready that if we see things turning inland county and specifically perhaps in our community, that we're also willing to then come back and revise our thinking on that. So I think we go through this through some sort of a, kind of a stair step approach. Let's see if we can incent the right behaviors through something that's less onerous and measure what's going on in the environment as we get into the later fall season.
Well.
I'd like to also echo the same thought where at this time, I think making an advisory is what I would be in favor of. Just like Grant said, I'd say at this time. So if things do change and it does need to be mandated, I think I would be in favor in the future if things do change. But for now, advisory. I just pulled up some numbers on the Lynn County Public Health website. And unfortunately, on there, it does show recovered. But you never hear that on the news. You're always hearing how many cases there are, new cases, new cases. It was never talking about recovery. And just the numbers that Lynn County Public Health is showing right now, when I looked it up, it shows in Marion that there's 78 active cases. There could be more, obviously. That's just what's reported. That's, I did the math quick too, on a 40,000 population, that's point zero zero, just under point zero zero two percent of the Marion's population right now is saying that they have COVID. So anyway, just throwing the statistics out that I just looked up. But yeah, for right now, I'd be in favor of just doing a man, advisory. And I do really like your idea, Randy, for some type of universal sign that could be made that we can distribute to businesses in town that want to put a mask mandate in place for their business. I think that'd be excellent if it's something that's the same in all businesses.
Okay. I appreciate everybody's input on it. I, I've said all along, even though, you know, this is something that I could have done on my own. I didn't want to make this decision without the backing of the council. I think it's a very important issue. And this is, I really appreciate everybody sharing their views on it. It's not, I know, and for everybody out there, this is not an issue that or a decision that any of us take lightly. I know that it's a, you know, it's a very heavy issue. And you know, I've kind of gone back and forth on it. It's, it's not an easy decision to make, especially when it's not really, there's no decisive answer as to the enforceability. There's no divisive decisive answer as to our, our authority to do it. You know, there are opinions that hasn't been tested and ruled on. And, you know, I tend to feel that, you know, if by now people are not wearing a mask, putting a mandate that's not really enforced out there is not going to make them do it. I do worry about, or one of the things I've thought about is, you know, we've just gone through this terrible disaster that really was a unifying thing for the community. And it was so refreshing and nice to go through that period when everyone was working together in one direction. So causing further division with something, you know, does cross my mind as, you know, something to think about. I do like the idea of the uniform sign that is easily recognizable. And I think if we, from what I'm reading from the council, the general consensus, we don't know where Steve stands yet, but the general consensus seems to be to really make a heavy push for a recommended action rather than a mandate. And it seems to me that the enforcement is the same whichever way. Maybe, you know, put a lot more effort into education and into the reasons for, for compliance and try to get voluntary compliance from, especially from the businesses. I think that's how I read what everyone is, or most people are saying, or at least the consensus of the majority. But.
Mayor, if I may, I had received an email from Councilman Jensen since he knew he was not going to be able to be here on Tuesday. And he indicated in the email that he believes it's the traffic in businesses that does need the mandate and that that he would support that option. Okay. Just for the council to know where he stood on the issue.
Okay. So for Thursday, Lon, will there be two options or how, what's the?
I would say based on the consensus of the council, it seems like the one with the recommendation language is the one that the clear majority of the group seems to be leaning towards. So we could certainly have both available. So you could look at the other language, but put one on the agenda, the one with the recommendation language on the agenda. And if something happens between now and then that would change the council's opinion, you could always amend that using the language from the other one. Make sense?
Okay, go ahead.
Just a point of clarification. In that, I think we're referring to version two. Is, would it be appropriate to have language in there that we will continue to reevaluate our, our situation for additional action if necessary? Is I, maybe I didn't, maybe that's there and I didn't catch it.
I can certainly add that in and send out an updated version to everyone.
In that same vein, sorry to continue this and then I'll turn my mic off. It's language around augmented public service announcements, signage, whatever the case. Is that appropriate or we just do that as a general understanding of what we've discussed tonight?
I believe we would just do that as a general understanding. I mean, it seems like the council clearly supports that. And that wouldn't actually take your action for us to do that. Yes, go ahead.
I'm curious of how this, this is going to be, because I thought this was going to be a mayoral proclamation. Are we voting on putting, doing a mayoral proclamation?
I think it would be an endorsement of a particular direction.
It'd be a motion of support for a male proclamation, mayoral proclamation.
Thank you. I just didn't know if it was some type of resolution or something.
Okay. Anything else to add? Yes, go ahead.
Your Honor, I just, I want to circle back around again to this business and I don't want to label it as a business. This would be a location of multiple people or something like that. But I, I think it would be nice to see, you know, I'm reading this proposed proclamation here. And I would like to make sure that we're giving emphasis and reassuring business owners or people of management of collective bodies of people that lateral movement to make sure that they, you know, do have that flexibility to, you know, enforce that mask on an individual basis. I think we, I would like to see language in that, in there. As a business owner, that would mean a lot to me to be able to make sure that I had that knowledge of knowing that it is okay to we either refuse patrons or, or request and help them enforce that within their own walls of business or their gathering. So however, we could do that or even if there's even support of that.
And I just wanted to clarify something, you know, what I said. But in, in thinking about this, it was important for me that if it was going to be a mandate or whichever direction we took, that it would have this strong support from the council. I just, I think it's that important of a decision that it should have really strong support from the entire council and have everyone behind it if we were going to do it, so. Okay. Thank you. The only item remaining on our agenda is a closed session.
Mr. Brandt?
Mayor, I make a motion to adjourn to closed session regarding litigation as permitted under section 21.5, subsection 1C of the Code of Iowa.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to adjourn to closed session regarding litigation as permitted under section 21.51C of the Code of Iowa. And we have the attorney's statement, please.
Your Honor, I have reviewed the proposed subject matter for the closed section and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa Code Section 21.51C.
Okay. Any discussion before we vote? We have the vote, please.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. Atkins?
Yes.
Mayor Abou Osley?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Ms. Cadelia?
Yes.
Mr. Sterned?
Yes.
Okay. Meeting is adjourned to closed session. Thank you for joining us.